Test.
Welcome everyone to the July eighteenth regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam Clerk, can you do roll?
Councilmember Sloten.
Here.
Councilmember Purdock.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Claffey.
Here. Vice Mayor, sorry, Vice Mayor Overton, can you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing. Obviously, this weekend was an important moment in American history. We should all be free to voice our opinion about the things we care about. So if we could take a moment to remember the folks who were lost and injured or those in your life that may be struggling right now. Thank you. City Manager? Any changes to the agenda?
Will you approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Ted.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sloten, a second from Councilmember Kramer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote's unanimous. Moving on to item one, presentation of July's adoptable dogs.
He's himself.
This is Dennis. He's an approximately three-year-old black lab mix. Dennis has been in our shelter since December tenth, twenty twenty-two. That's five hundred and eighty-six days. This boy is long overdue for the family to call his own. Dennis has a good, Dennis has good manners and will sit politely and patiently for a treat. Dennis loves to swim, splash in the sprinkler, and enjoy his long hikes. He's also the best at playing fetch. Dennis would do best in an active home. He is neutered, fully vaccinated, microchipped, and ready to meet his forever family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Good luck, Dennis.
He looks really excited.
He's so calm.
He likes to put up with people. He was hitting me out in the lot. It's like really fun dog. So just up down the statistics, Lieutenant Peterson asked me to give you this month's stat, and then he wanted me to point out something to the council. So up to seven eighteen, we've currently taken in two hundred and seventy dogs. So just over six months. Two hundred and thirty-nine of those dogs have left the shelter, forty-two have gone to rescue, a hundred and eighty-two have returned to owner. We had thirteen adopted and two were euthanized. We have not lost any in the shelter due to care or escape. We still have a live release rate of ninety-nine point oh four percent. The current shelter population is forty-four dogs. We have ten-four adult dogs, and we currently have no puppies. We have two cats, we have eleven kittens. We've done ninety-five microchips this year, and we've given out ninety-seven free vaccinations from clinic. Lieutenant Peterson wanted me to compare the stats to last year, just in regards to live intake. Last year, for the entire year of twenty twenty-three, we took in two hundred and seventy-nine dogs into the shelter. This year, current to six months, we've taken in two hundred and seventy dogs. So we've almost doubled the intake from last year's numbers. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right, item number two, swearing in of our newest police officers chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we'll be swearing in three new department members. I'm gonna have them come on up here with me. Let me give a little introduction bio on the three of them, and then we will move on to the swearing in. On the far end down there on my right, we have Dispatcher Daw. Dispatcher Daw was born and raised in Napa. She moved to Lake County in twenty fifteen. She loves the community and scenery in Lake County in her free time. She likes to spend time with her family, friends, and dogs. She loves gardening, paddleboarding, and being outdoors. She started with us in March. It just took a little bit of time to get everything arranged to do this at the council meeting when she has her family and friends here. Next, we have Officer Troughton. She was born and raised in Napa also. After graduating high school in twenty sixteen, she joined the United States Marine Corps, where she proudly served until April of twenty twenty-one. After leaving the Marine Corps, she moved to Lake County in her free time. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends. She also likes to fish and hike. Officer Troughton, we hired her initially as a police officer trainee on January second of this year, and we sponsored her through the Police Academy. And then after graduating the academy, she started the field training program on June seventeenth this year. So she's about a month into the program. Next, we have Officer Scott Sanchez. Officer Sanchez was born and raised in Lake County. After graduating from Kelsey High School in twenty eighteen, he went to Uba College for two years, then transferred to Kansas University, where he played football and received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, fishing, and playing sports with his friends. Like Officer Troughton, Officer Sanchez started on January second of this year. He was sponsored, we sent him to the Police Academy, graduated last month, and started the same day as Officer Troughton on June seventeenth. Before we get into swearing in part, I would just like to thank the three of them for choosing to come work here. There's lots of opportunities out there in law enforcement, places to work. And we're glad they chose to work here and be a part of this community and help us with the community to improve safety and quality of life. So with that, we will move on to the swearing in. I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. If you just want to have someone come up that'll open your badge, that'd be great.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess for photos, so if the family wants to come up and take some shots, we'll be back in, oh, five minutes? Item number three, presentation of the two thousand twenty-three annual tourism report. Mr. Fisher.
I'm gonna give it. We're there, we're there. Okay. Hello, I'm Brian Fisher, Executive Director of Visit Lake County, CA, known as the TAD. And I'm here to give the mayor and the city council and Clear Lake staff the update for the two thousand twenty-three marketing report for all of the efforts that we've made in the last year. So we'll just dive right in here. Alan's got my... There we are. So we're gonna be really quick and conscious of your time. So this is the agenda for today, Alan. We have a couple new board members since the last time we met. One, they're both at the bottom, Jeff Pletcher, Director of Marketing and Hospitality at Robinson Rancheria, and Jeff Horberg, the hotel manager at Canacta Mystic, Canacta Harbor Casino, or excuse me, Canacta Harbor Resort. So two new board members, but outside of that, the board has stayed pretty steady Eddie, and it's a good group of people. We meet quarterly. So all good in the board, on the board space. Tourism, the economic impact of tourism, as we all know, it's a big industry, and it's a very promising industry for Lake County. This will show you the two thousand twenty-three revenue for our organization. We grew it, increased eighteen percent year-over-year from twenty-two to twenty-three. You'll notice there, the largest chunk of our budget, seventy-three percent comes from the county. Both county collections, TID, and then the county also gives us a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in TOT funds to use. So very important key there. The next one is, how have we done over the last three years? So kind of where we're at, because this is my fourth year in front of you folks, we got a little bit of data now. We know a little bit where we're coming from. I think we're, I think we're a little bit more understanding of what's realistic. You know, we do our accounting on a cash basis, so we we recognize cash when it comes in and we recognize an expense when it comes in. So when when the county is late by three or six weeks on a big payment and it moves into the next year, that changes everything for us. So you can see it makes it a little difficult in budgeting, but we kind of are, we're kind of seeing some trends there. We have the three jurisdictions, well, three jurisdictions, county, two cities, and then two contracts with Robinson and Point Fine and working on the fourth one with the our folks at Canacate Vista Casino. And then next is the data from Dean Runyon Associates, the economic impact. The real takeaway here, there's two that get me kind of excited. Well, you see that the trend is up, stands for, you know, a difficult year in 2020. And then the bar chart over the circle chart over in the other corner, for the first year ever in four years, we took market share from our friends up in Del Norte County. So we we're number three, we're not number four in terms of the economic impact and the spending. But the next slide will really kind of really says everything. But for every dollar somebody spends in one of our hotels or one of our Airbnbs, they're going to spend $4 somewhere else. So it's really important, the hotel and the service industry, those guys are big beneficiaries. And I know you guys, all of you know this, and the work you're doing here to bring a hotel into Clear Lake is, you know, is is exactly what you're doing at it. All boats lift and everything's good. We've only had two really new properties put on the marketplace in 2023, really kind of won in 2023, which was Canacate Harbor, which opened in kind of a soft opening. The the folks at Hotopia really didn't open until this year, 2024. So more hotel rooms is gonna is gonna bring and is gonna lift everybody else's boat. Next up, we have the 2023 marketing program review. We're going to just take a look at what we did in 23. How do we measure success in at the TID? We look at website traffic, we look at our social media growth, we look at campaign impressions, email database, marketing partnerships, and public relations earned media, which is something we've never really been able to look at before. And website traffic, last year was kind of a crazy year with Google Analytics. Google Analytics basically went away and GA4 came in. So it was very difficult, almost impossible for us to do a year-over-year comparison. But suffice it to say, we had 370,000 page views on our website, 196,000 users in 231,000 sessions. I think most interesting here is that bottom quadrant, they are the top referral sources. Where does our traffic come from? And number one is organic search. And that's, that's, that's really good. You you want, you want good numbers and organic search. That wasn't happening so much before, but people are looking for Lake County. And that that could be anybody from a developer, it doesn't have to be somebody who's looking and, you know, what is Lake County all about? Direct is people who are just coming in directly and typing in lakecounty.com. Number two source of our traffic, paid search. Number three, organic social, Karen Pavoni will look at her work a little bit, and then paid social. So some really, really important, you know, ways to look at how we get our traffic. Best thing a destination marketing organization has is its website. That's what we sell. We sell the idea of, hey, check us out, take a look and see if there's something that, you know, interests you. And if you, you know, come and take a look at us and come spend some time in Lake County. Up next is our direct website. So it's a widget, widget that sits on our homepage that lets people look at places to stay where they come to Lake County. We have over 56,000 searches last year or in 2023 on our booking direct widget. So those are people who are actually going in and checking out dates and looking. You know, we had a really super sophisticated group of stakeholders. It would all be connected to the backend of their their reservation booking engines. And we'd be able to do a lot more data on it, but we don't have that. So so we just, we're just happy to see really steady growth in that space. Next up is organic social media. Karen Pavoni, as you know, does a great job with our social media. She grew our Facebook page 2%, but she works her hardest really that her number one medium is Instagram. We grew it organically 13 and a half percent. So we're pleased with those numbers and we like the reach in other cities. We definitely reach in county, but we love the fact that we're reaching out of, you know, San Francisco, Sacramento, Stockton, Santa Rosa, the feeder markets, the drive markets to Lake County. Hopefully blog and newsletter. I kind of some, I call it sometimes the monthly slog. It's a lot of work, but we've changed kind of our direction with our newsletter. We wanted, we wanted to send newsletters that really promised something, that shows something, show what people can do when they come to Lake County. In this case, we were talking about all of our fireworks displays. We recently did one of music, where are you going to go see music in Lake County? We wanted to be topical, more kind of like more newsy than just, you know, here's, here's a beautiful winery. So we've, we've switched that gear. We we have, we see a lot of increase. We work hard at actually grabbing and getting new email contacts at all of our trade shows. I'll talk about that in a second. Our open rate is is above industry average and our click rate is above industry average. We definitely see people coming into our website from our newsletter, spending a lot more time than anybody else. They come in, they're 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 warm, they're much more of a warm prospect when they come in from a newsletter. Paid search, it's a numbers game. Close to half a million impressions, 46,000 clicks to the website from paid search on Google and a click way, a CTR click through rate that's higher than industry average. We're happy with that. And where do they, what are they looking for when they search in Lake County? They're looking for camping in California. They're looking for cabins in California. They're looking for places to go. They're looking for Clear Lake. So we we hone in on those keywords. We have thousands and thousands of keywords, but we we really follow. We spend our money against the ones that bring us the most people. Next up is paid social, Facebook and Instagram, probably the strongest one for us without a doubt. On the left-hand corner, we run every quarter, we we switch it up. We run what's called a carousel. We run eight different properties in Lake County. And they they flash by a reader really quickly, but each one of them, each one of them will talk about something really cool at that property. And we just show, we want to show the depth and the breadth of what we've got in Lake County. So it's important for us on social that we do some brand advertising and we actually have some video that we do on our social media, paid social media. And we try to drive people, we we experiment. We, for a long time, we were driving them just to the homepage. I said, well, let's try to drive them somewhere else. So we were driving to our see do page, which has got a lot of, you know, activities and events. And what we saw with that was the drop off was really fast for some reason. Like they would not spend like, you know, I mean, time spent was like, like three seconds. It's like, okay, let's not do that anymore. Let's go back to our homepage. So there's ways to play with this stuff. And I think we're getting a little bit better and we're kind of figuring out a little bit more. Programmatic display banners. So this is like the top of the pyramid. This is where you're really trying to just lay down some, the idea of like Lake County is a place for people to go visit in in our feeder markets. And so a lot of impressions, you don't get a lot of clicks out of this stuff. You're really just, you're really looking to just talk about kind of our key pillars, hiking, biking, whining and dining in our lake life. Next up, we also do video on that, on the programmatic display. It's called Connected TV. And we deliver a ton of impressions there, 1.4 million impressions. Now nowhere near the kind of clicks that you're going to get out of like a search or or social. But it's the right place for us to be. And we have a lot, we have some pretty cool stuff and I'll talk to you a little bit about what we're going to be doing there in the next couple of weeks. Next up, a partnership with North of Ordinary, this huge partnership, folks. We are in the North Coast region for Visit California. There's 12 regions that California divides into tourism regions. Ours is called North Coast. We call it North of Ordinary and it's Lake, Humboldt, Mendocino and Del Norte County. We all, four of us put in $11,000. So we have $44,000 and then the the county, excuse me, the state, Visit California matches that $44,000. This year, we actually got the the visitor center in Ukiah to throw in some money too. So we're going to be even higher. And we take all that money and we're able to really drive people to our websites and we're able to attend some trade shows. It's, it's, it's really, it's a great partnership with us. There are people that I can call all the time and ask, you know, what's going on in your space? And they, we all kind of talk all the time. Tomorrow, we have our our bi-annual meeting, which will be by Zoom. So the North Coast partnership ship is really strong. North of Ordinary, this is the campaign that we ran on USA Today. So it's in the West Coast and we talk about water, wine and redwoods. We have to, it's hard when, you know, we don't have a lot of coast. We have 110 miles of lakeshore. They've got, you know, hundreds of mile of coast, but they work really hard and they're they're very amenable to working to include us. So we often get like lead stuff on it, like if, anyway, it's a, it's a good partnership. They understand kind of where we're coming from. But, you know, this, this campaign alone already this year has done about almost 3, 33, 3,400 emails. So it's, it's great for us. They're warm leads. We'll send them out. Do you really want to receive an email from us? And, you know, we'll see whatever, we'll see the percentage of them drop. But, you know, we keep building our database and and that's, that's a good thing. Next up, our partnerships, again, Visit California, the largest destination marketing organization in the world is Visit California, very important group for us, very important that we raise our profile there. This year or last year, they invited us in for a mixer. We put in before their entire staff, their ad agency, their public relations people. We told them we had 15 minutes, they broke it into groups. We did it 10 different times and we we basically brought Lake County to life. It was really fun. We had Joy Merely there talking about our wine industry and our our volcanic wines and everything that we do in the wine space. We had Melinda, Melinda, they're talking about micro farming and all the cool stuff that's going on in the organic farming space. And then our total rocks are Angela Paul Madow. They're talking about Lake, Clear Lake, bringing it to life. And it was mesmerizing and 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 a lot of good stuff came out of that. So we continue with those partnerships and we also continue to fund the CTA program, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. That's the program that helps everybody in Lake County that have somebody that's in a service-facing position get trained in how to talk about Lake County, how to help visitors, how to be really visitor-facing. And it's a great program, continues to have really great classes and full classes. And and we're really pleased with the program. Next up, our trade shows, great partnership, the Lake County, the the Lake County Wine Grape Commission took out a big booth at the San Diego Wine Festival, something we would never be able to afford to do. They said, Brian, if you can get yourself down there and you can get something together for, you know, your table, you're invited into our booth with about 12 or 13 other wineries. So we went down there, it was in November and we sold the heck out of Lake County. We had sweepstakes that the Tallman gave us two nights and $50 gift certificate. We signed up a lot of people who were interested in winning and learning. And I mean, just the conversations were really fun. People were really engaged with what's going on and where are you guys? And I can't believe you're just above Napa County and I've never heard of you. So we we hear that a lot. Next up, we're going again this year, it's in November again this year. We also attended the Outlook Forum for Visit California, was in Sacramento last year, was Trudy, who helps us with public relations, and then our agency account manager, Amber, and it was, it's a great show. It's all the industry people and it's a great place to see, be seen and to make sure that you, Visit California knows that you're there. So we we continue to do our trade shows. We had our visitor map, seems like old news, but that was last year, 23. Visitor map is great, it is printed 65,000 of these. They've been all over the visitor centers and I've seen them all over Lake County. Just walked into, I forget where it was, and they had it on the other wall and they put it on some spongy board. So the map has been great and yes, it was all ad-supported. We love that. We love that stuff. Next up, public relations earned media. Earned media is something that's new because we really never had any. We would just get that usual, you know, rotten story about like, you know, the algae in the lake. That's kind of all we got. So we're seeing a lot more earned media now. People are paying attention. They're writing about Lake County, you know, and earned media can go both ways. We could still, you know, we all know that we can get that NASA picture on June 1st. And, you know, those, those hurt and that is earned. It's just the wrong kind of earned media. But we we we're happy with the earned media that we've got. And I think that we're, you know, that's something that Visit California can help us a lot with because they're kind of like the receptacle and the recipients of people who are wanting to come into, come into the lake or come into California and write about California. So earned media is really cool. Next up, we actually, it was February of last year, we renewed the district for 10 more years. And we went from one and a half percent to, or one, yeah, one and a half to two and a half percent. So happy about where we're going there. It's just going to take, it's going to take time, but the district is here for, for till 2033. Please with that. And a little bit of an outlook. So what's going on? Because we're halfway through this year. What's happening in 2024? First up, I think you've all probably seen Lake Life Magazine. It was a great partnership with the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, City of Clear Lake, for your seed money support to get us started. We printed 20,000 copies of the magazine. It's 80 pages with four covers, all advertising supported. And we've got 10,000 of those 20,000 copies out of county sitting in all of the California visitor centers and at the Charles Schulz Sonoma Airport. So people getting off the plane to pick up a really cool magazine about Lake County. So we're happy with that distribution. It went to all of your stakeholders in your town. So all of the hotels were really, really excited to have it and we're going to use it at all of our trade shows. We'll have something a little nicer to hand out now than just a map. To speak a little bit, realtors love it, businesses love it. So happy with the magazine. We we're doing a lot with the community, the economic development, that's economic development. Yeah, what? Economic Development Corporation, we partnered with the Chamber, we did Lake Leadership Forum. And who is that standing in the right-hand corner? That is the CEO of Visit California, who came to Lake County to open up and give, give the keynote speak, speech at our leadership forum. It was a gorgeous day on the lake over in Lakeport, beautiful new hotel, beautiful new restaurant at Alma Waterfront. We had a house and it was just, it was like really cool. People were feeling, feeling it great. She had her staff there. It was just, it was a great thing. Again, working those relationships at Visit California, very important. Next up, we're gonna have some new faces. I I had a lot of flack last year from some of the old faces. We got some new faces of Lake County. We, and it's a long story and we'll take you through it, but the great partner in the Lake County Wine Grape Commission, they said, we will help you. We will fund a shoot, a high res, I mean, a really high deal shoot. We've got really great folks and they're going to come to town nine different times. And we're going to get all of those assets and those assets are going to go into our asset bank so that we can make better commercials, better social, better everything, because we've never had video. We've, we've used our photography kind of like Ken Burns and we moved it along. We're gonna have some really new stuff. And this was the the group that we shot for two days at two, two different locations all around the county. We've got a lake shoot coming up that's going to be really beautiful. We're going to do a camping shoot at Clear Lake State Park. So we really want to capture the county in video. Video, short form video is kind of where everything is going, especially in social media. So we need, we need those assets and we really thank the Lake County Wine Grape Commission for that partnership. And next up is earned media, just this year alone. We're kind of rocking it. People are, people are finding Lake County, they're writing about us and they read it and somebody else wants to read it or write about it. We're pleased with that. A lot of it comes through Visit California and and then they kind of, you know, there's a like a follow me, a monkey see, monkey do kind of thing. I just yesterday received a request from Travel Leisure Magazine. No figure, Travel Leisure, they want to spend time in Mendocino, Lake County and Napa County. It's like, we can do that. We got you. So I'm excited about it. The next one is a little bit more earned media. And then last but not least, Alan, is thank you very much, City of Clear Lake, for your support. And we'll have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any questions from council?
Thank you. It seems like the trend is.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like we, we we found what we can and can't do and it was hard to get in, you really didn't know. And then started this district and we ran straight into like global pandemic. So it's now we're kind of coming out, we're like figuring it out. And I think it's, yeah, I feel pretty good about it, to be honest with you, Dirk. I think that, you know, we need more, we need more places, we need more product for people to stay in. We need more hotopias, we need more hotels in all of our jurisdictions. We need better properties and better places for people to stay. And and then they, I really believe they will. We've got the natural resources and we've got goods, but we need to, we need to just continue to grow in all those areas.
All right. If there's no other questions, Mr. Fisher, thank you so much. The evidence is clear. I I think you have done a superb job with this organization. So thank you for all you do. Moving on to item four, presentation of proclamation declaring July 2024 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Whereas parks and recreation promotes physical, emotional and mental health and wellness through organized, self-directed fitness, play and activity. And whereas parks and recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for and nonprofits and offering events for residents engagement. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities. Teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, promoting spaces that come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. Whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics and landscape. Whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and serving as, as key points of service, helping our communities heal both physically and emotionally. Whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our national resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe and vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offering, offered in their recreation. So, opportunities. Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. And whereas the California Parks and Recreation Society has released a statewide public awareness campaign, Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, programs and services. Now therefore, the irresolved that the citizens of Clear Lake or the citizens of California recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space and facilities for the health, wellness, development, inspiration and safety of all Californians. And be it further resolved that we declare the month of July twenty twenty-four as Parks Make Life Better Month. Signed this date by me. We, do we have someone? No. Okay. Well, we'll hand this off to team when we see her again. All right. Moving on to item F, public comment. Since the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that's not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. I have some written comments here. Public comment, you have three minutes. First up, Alice Reese. You have a couple of topics here.
It is.
Good evening, staff and council. I wanted to say something about water company. Every month I receive a letter from the water company. Okay. Every month I get a letter from my water company stating that the city is suing me. I don't want you guys to sue my water company. You know, come on. I don't think that with all the things you say that's wrong with the water company, the city wants to take on that burden. I think that now, I think last year was approved that these private water, not for, not for private water companies can attain government funding. And I think that should, that you should help them do that rather than sue them. I don't think that you should be taking over all three of our water companies. I don't think that you should, you are able to handle. Then I wanted to just make a comment about the temporary location of a taco truck business. I'll make sure I draw. This is where I used to, I can't remember what it's here before. But this man spent a lot of money clearing the land and the city condemned the buildings that were there. And he doesn't have proper parking. He'd never come to the planning commission, didn't even get permits. So I think that's something that we should look into. Council should look into because I never heard of a temporary business. Oh, let's, let's spend all this money and try it out for a while. No, I don't think that's right.
You're referring to Highlands Park, the, the food truck area?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Sid Minder, can you clarify if they have the proper permits to do that?
Uh, yes, they have the permits. They were given a temporary use permit for one year to, they have all the permits from environmental health to operate.
When do we do temporary uses? I've never heard of that being granted.
Or use permit.
Even for a temporary use permit, wouldn't you have to?
Well, we can have a discussion about this, but it is set up in our zoning ordinance. So, you know, if you want to come in and, and talk the particulars about it, we'd certainly be able to do that.
The next thing I wanted to mention was the senior center being closed. We were kicked out of senior center in the middle of October of last year. We still have not been able to go back. You know, senior, it's important for seniors, well-being, emotionally, mentally and physically to be able to congregate with our own age group and do things with, with each other. And that's not happening. And I think that, I don't know what the excuse is, but I also had scheduled an event that I had to cancel at the last minute because the senior center wasn't open when they said it would be. Now, and I also wanted to brag that we are doing a craft fair on August third. At least in, take a peek. It'd be nice. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Mr. Frank Costner.
So. My name is Frank Costner. I'm the general manager of Conocdy County Water District. Couple of comments I have is, one is that Conocdy County Water District does want responsible growth and development in the city. We are pro-growth. We just would like the developers to pay their own way. Little bit about myself. So I've been working with the water district for thirty-six years now. I've lived in Lake County since nineteen seventy-six. And over those years, I have observed the water quality in the lake getting significantly worse, especially over the past ten years. And as the community can see along the shoreline of the lake, there is huge algae mats that form. And even during this year, when we had significant water in the lake, the algae mats are forming. I can smell them for about two and a half miles from the lake where I live. And for whatever reason, it seems that the water quality is getting worse. I would recommend that the city council form a committee to address the shoreline algae and the low water quality issues that we have. Currently, the city council has formed a committee to investigate water issues. And their investigation of water issues is to consolidate the water districts and to take over the water districts. So that there's one. The water district feels like the city has some issues that they need to address themselves before they start taking on greater responsibilities such as running a water district. As you probably are all aware, the city does have a system. The city has a stormwater collection system. And so I was just wondering if anybody in the council has inspected the stormwater system in the, in the admin's work, not the county water district. Operates. And what grade would you give the water system? What, what infrastructure grade would you give your recurrent water system that you have? That's a suspicious question, but. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but a lot of the roads are completely underwater during winter time. And the drainage, even though we did, did a significant, you guys have done a great job on chip sealing the roads. The water infrastructure was not addressed before the chip seal was done. And unfortunately, those are not having those improvements done. The chip seal is not going to last as long as it would have if, if those improvements were done. So there's a watershed and when, when watershed is not managed correctly, the silt and debris in the, around the hills will wash into the lake. So when the, when the silt and nutrients from those recovering areas wash into the lake, that makes the water quality in the lake worse. And so I would just hope that the city would consider looking into these issues and addressing them and set up trying to take a little water. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costner. Leslie Sheridan.
Um, my name is Leslie Sheridan and I have, I have a recurring issue with a neighbor that is a meth and fentanyl dealer. And it is a noise ordinance violation. This has been going on for a very long time. Last time I was in here, they had dogs on the property. The dogs went on and on and on for four months. It went on and on and on. And it was not handled. The police and the animal control both pointed at each other. Oh, we can't do anything. We can't do anything. Oh, they're gonna handle it. They're gonna handle it. Then it went on for four months and nothing got done until I came here. I came here, I walked out of here immediately was told by a police officer that it was because the pound was full. So this is more than a, a noise ordinance issue. This is a health and well-being issue for myself as well as for other people. I have epilepsy and the number three causes of triggers for a seizure are stress, interrupted sleep or lack of sleep. And this has been going on and on and on. And when I walked out of here last time and I said, both the police and the animal control knew about that for over four months despite my writing, begging for them to get on the problem. And they knew about it. And I walked out of here and the guy tells me it was because the pound was full. So you're gonna put my well-being and the well-being of other people because your damn pound is full. And that is not okay. It is not okay. If I get in a vehicle or I walk somewhere and I wind up having a seizure and I harm someone, kill someone, that is on, that is on you. And the same thing is going on. The drug operation has increased. They're dealing this with the meth and heroin guy across the street who's more smart and more respectful than the one next door. The one next door there, my bedroom is literally eight feet from the front door. And the, the drug thing going in and out, the banging, the hammering, and the police show up and they say, oh, you know, we don't hear anything going on now. And if they don't show up right when it's going on, it's, it's not going on. If they didn't show up, oh, it must not be going on. And then I've had police over the years. Unfortunately, I live on a block with tons of drug users. The drug dealer across from me who blew up the neighbor's house several years ago, next door to him, hazmat came in, whatever the hell they made meth with. And the ones next door, it is massively expanding. There are cars out the back. It's like five new cars and it's ridiculous. This guy comes in, this new tenant that's being hired by the drug dealer, he comes in, this is the way you meet the neighbor. You come up, you see somebody in the yard and you're like, who are you? Your new neighbor. I said, what are you doing in my yard? He's in the yard. Oh, I'm, I'm fixing your fence for you. I said, I didn't give you permission to be in my yard. Next thing I know, he said, oh, I pulled your weeds for it. That, I want you to stop the noise. All I'm asking is for you to follow the law. But these people, they don't follow the law anyway. So. And, and by the way, I've had years unfortunately living on this damn block. And unfortunately due to financial reasons, I can't leave right now and I haven't been able to leave. So I'm stuck here and the coding department, I've had with this police department. I have a letter from my neurologist. I have a letter from my writing mind neurologist. I have a letter that I put on their front porch this morning. I have a picture of violence against my vents. And I will tell you at this point, at this point, with this not being handled, I'm going to tell you right now, and I couldn't have done this last time when I walked out of here. I will tell you, if I get one more lying police officer the other day, oh, you know, you don't need to sign this.
If you could, I have lieutenant. Lieutenant Sanders in the back here, please share that material with him. He will connect with us after.
And I told Andy White this when he was in the department, when Cody was trying to keep them getting heat in my house. SB, California SB two, reporting dishonest police officers.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. That is all we have for written submissions. If anyone here in the chamber would like to make a public comment, now's the time to come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. Come ahead.
No response. I have left the messages. He has not returned my call about the street. I'm still getting the big potholes. There's a lot of traffic going up my street, down the street, and we have potholes. And I can't see why we can't have our street paved just like everybody else have theirs done. Why do I have to wait till we're on a list? Or you get time to have it done? When I've seen so much other work around here being done and nothing, we call and nothing is being done. So why should someone say, give me a call if you have a problem? I call, I leave a message, no response. So what good is that?
So ma'am, we do have a lot of roadwork happening. Would you mind sharing what street you're on? All right. We'll look into that. Thank you. Yes, come on forward.
Fractured on the wrong side of the road. I'm just wondering if you could get some yellow lines that would tell people which lane to the side of the road because it scared me and.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else in the chamber? Yes, please come forward.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake, I live. I too have been in here time and again to discuss and bring up the road conditions. And like this lady here, the potholes I've said before, you can drive into. And I, I'm just curious as to, I know there's a lot of work being done up on Waukegan Avenue. All this grant that's being applied for to do more work in that area. I, I'm wondering why the focus so much in that particular area. They're doing work where they just did this huge renovation. You know, a, a pullout, stop signs and, and now they're doing more planned work. And, and as far as sidewalks go and why there are no sidewalks in this town, why is it then when there's new built, new, like the avenues or the airport project? Why aren't the new building developers responsible for putting in those sidewalks? So we don't have more neighborhoods with dirt sidewalks and potholes that, you know, are forming. The entire city is going to be, except for Waukegan Avenue, is going to be full of potholes. And, and that's how I drive around. It's just in and out of potholes. And not to mention walking is a major hazard. If you're, if you're walking around the park, nothing but potholes. So you have a beautiful park, again, I mentioned, and you've got, the streets around it are crumbling and have been for decades. The streets around it are crumbling and have been for decades. So I'd like like this gal. You know, to have some work done on the streets that have been here forever. And and nothing's been done. They're just neglected. They're they're not important. And I'd like some focus to be put on. The road conditions in this town. Um. So I live on Yule Avenue. If you'd like to know where I live, the street I live, and it's highly tr- traveled. Uh, the potholes are getting worse on on my block, at the end of my block where the school buses, you know, gather to pick the kids up. So it's something that you guys really need to focus on, look into. Go go check it out. Um, because I, you know, humans live in areas where you don't have that problem. Okay, but but there's a lot of a lot of us that have lived here for a long time that have been dealing with this for many, many, many years. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we all know we inherited a very difficult situation with the roads. About two meetings ago, we we gave out our plan for road development. So. We we can get you the recording. Uh, any other co- any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments?
There is one comment on Zoom, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the commenter is Brian Hughes. He states, hello, my name is Brian Hughes. I am the attorney for Highlands Water Company. I have two questions. One, at a recent city council meeting when Mr. Rob Roscoe presented on Highlands. The city manager stated that he had scheduled multiple presenters on the subject. Highlands officially requests this list and offers its assistance in coordinating with the presenters. On offering information for them to have for their presentation. Two, the city attorney and I have emailed concerning setting up a meeting between Highlands and the city on water issues. However, the city attorney's opinion is that it should be set up between the city manager and the general manager. However, I've stated to him multiple times that I will be representing Highlands in organizing the meeting, though I don't have to be there. As this topic is not on the agenda, I am concerned that the city attorney is unable to get your opinion on the agenda for a meeting between us. I have asked him what the council's opinion is with no response. That concludes Mr. Hughes's statement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right, I will bring it back and close public comment and move on to item G, our consent agenda. Any council members have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? Anyone here in the chamber uh want to pull an item? All right, bring it back.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Councilmember Perdok, a second from Councilmember Sluton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to item twelve, discussion and consideration of a ma- mitigated uh mitigation fee program on behalf of Lake County Fire Protection District. Uh, Mr. Flor.
Yeah, sure, I can give a brief overview of the staff report. So um. I think we've had uh this on the agenda three different times up to this point, workshop, official public hearing. And then um the council actually adopted changes to the municipal code related to this. But as you recall, when this was originally adopted in the nineties, the municipal code itself had the fee structure in it, which is something that we don't do anymore. We. Refer to a resolution where um all the fees are included. And so um. The changes that the council made previously made that change referring to a resolution and um we haven't brought that back because there was. Interest from the council and some other folks about the sort of this countywide discussion about um. Development fees and the impact on um development ac- across the whole county. That meeting for a variety of reasons never actually happened. And um. The other, the the county and the city of Lakeport have both adopted um. Fees for their jurisdictions. And so um we've had some discussions internally about this and we had a. A meeting or two with Mayor, Councilmember Kramer, um and the fire district to talk about this. And yeah, I'm not sure. What all you want to go into, but basically based on um. Councilmember Kramer and Mayor Claffey and kind of discussions we have, we crafted the resolutions before you tonight related to those fees. Um, and I guess open up the discussion from there on if it's um. Any changes that the council wants to make um. What's what's recommended in the resolution itself is essentially. Um, what was requested by the fire department for residential and non-residential, and then high-impact surcharge, the administrative surcharge. Um, so that will result in essentially, um, you know, a. Almost a doubling of fees for residential and then for larger commercial projects would be um a tripling of those fees. Um, one thing that at this point hasn't been recommended by the. The council members that were involved in this is including the automatic CPI adjustment, um, which was included in the uh fire districts. Um, I guess, recommendation to the council for adoption. So um, you know, we we can, I think. According to way we have the agenda items set up, we need to kind of address the resolution and then there are some changes that we've worked with um. The fire district's consultant on related to our ordinance around this, which hasn't been updated um in quite a period of time. And so there's. There's a few things that need to be tweaked. And so what I like to do is address the resolution. And I have a few kind of questions for the council to give staff direction on, and then we'll bring back. Uh, those ordinance adjustments at a future meeting for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Any questions here in the council? Seeing none, I I before I open up to public, I want to thank the fire district for for being patient as we go through this process. Appreciate your partnership and uh, well, we wish we could have had more buy-in from the county um to to have a more holistic conversation around development. To to delay this any further just seemed unsustainable. So uh we look forward to continue conversations with you and and all the districts here that affect clearly. All right, uh, I'll open it up to the public comment. If anyone here in the, yes, please come forward.
Hi, Margaret Garcia. Um, now I know I was here a few meetings back when the uh fire department was here. And I'm just curious, this discussion on an ordinance and and triple doubling and tripling of fees. Is that something that's gonna happen like once you decide how much or or what the 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 fee amount is gonna be? Is that just gonna go into effect? And how are these fees, these fees are gonna affect our taxes on a yearly basis? Uh, and is this something that has been decided?
So these are development impact fees. So every time there's a new development, whether it be a home or commercial property, these fees are applied. So as a resident, unless you build a new home or expand your home, you won't be paying these fees.
Folks that are doing the developing.
Correct.
Okay, and that's the same thing. I I'm wondering as far as doing developing, you know, why aren't folks being responsible for putting in sidewalks and putting in proper driveways and streets and and that type of thing? All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments here? Chief?
Well, it's been on your local fire team. Um, it's just a short little letter and response to, you know, us working with you guys every day and your time meeting with you. Thank you for letting me come up here and and speak. I like I said, it's been a long road. Um, Mayor Claffey and Arctic City Council and. City Manager in Lakeport. I'm writing to thank you for your supporting the fire mitigation fees schedule for future development in the city of Florida. This does help save lives and funds critical fire protection and emergency medical response services for your community. But we'd like to have that pursuant to discuss the um adding the automatic annual inflation adjustments, the mitigation fees based upon the. Engineering news record construction cost index to your resolution. That would align with the balance of our next study. Including the adjustments in the resolution creates an April burn share of inflation costs. In the absence of an adjustment. We'll have to go through the entire nexus process, which is very costly and very time consuming on both our our personnel, city staff to to meet and discuss the outcomes. This would have to be done every time we did a fee increase. This will force the district to continue to meet the needs of development with no gradual increase to align with inflation. Building tomorrow's facilities using yesterday's yesterday dollars. I'm not working there, not working anywhere for a break. Not having another increase in eight years, we'll put us back in the same position which we are now increasing proposed large and the uh large increases in in one term. Increase to make up for potentially up to eight years. I know we talked about doing another study in three years, but we do have the opportunity to uh go eight years out, which will allow us really get a chance to um gauge and look at the future development. The department continues to seek grant funding. We have multiple grants out for apparatus, women, and other funding opportunities with. We'll bridge some of the gaps for the equipment that we're looking at. But we look at, um, you know, building out big infrastructure. You know, we we really need to to look at. The the best we can utilize those funds and that CPI, we we realize that in the development, the money we get from the moment is not even gonna come close to what we're gonna need to finance what we need. And that's why we save as much as we can. We're very conservative in our spending. And we look at grant funding, we look at creative financing. We have got years ago funded or you wait a one funded life, releasing the best for about two and a half million dollars. So we are always looking and creative, but we just feel um and looking at at a lot of the uh research we did on nexus studies, a majority of them, about ninety percent always have that. Adjustment in there. So I'm kind of asking you to consider adding that to to our our resolution. I would appreciate it and that will still be there. It's for you and the community, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Would anyone like? Yes.
Again, Frank Costner, a private citizen. Um, so I just I'm here in support of the fire department. I realize that, you know, uh, when you raise development fees, you know, it impacts development. Um, but I believe that development should be paying their own way as far as fire protection. Um, it's really important. I don't know if you guys noticed, but our our fire department kicks butt. Uh, you know, we had the fire in Lower Lake and we had the fire in Clear Lake and uh they attacked that um very well. And uh, I don't believe any charges were lost. Um, there was uh, and one of my employees uh was by the one in Clear Lake out by the Goose Neck and it was um. You know, I saw some pictures. It was it was it was quite uh, it looked pretty scary and they they really did a great job. Our fire department does a great job. And I'm just, I'm just here to support them in that. And then so um, you know, along that is that uh, Conaca County Water District. Uh, has installed thirty-two hundred feet of water main uh with eight new fire hydrants on Dan Road. That property is now complete. And I want to thank Alan and the staff. Uh, they're working with us on paving. I know this is kind of off topic, but they're working on us with uh paving the road. I really appreciate your guys' help on the paving job. And so that that's the type of um. The work that we would really, we really like to see. And the same with the fire department, you know, all working together uh for fire protection in city Clear Lake. Uh, so thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And I I want to just say again, you know, we we have to support our fire department. Uh, you know, we've had so many fires over the years and they do a great job on containing them as best they can. And they need the equipment. Uh, you know, to be able to continue doing that. And this is a way that uh the developers can help um bear those costs. Instead of each citizens, you know, taxes going up, assessments on properties and things of those natures. So I think that's why it's really important that we support the fire department. And support the nexus study and their their um their their increases. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments here in the chamber? You can be next, ma'am, if you want to come forward. You can go now. She just raised her hand at the same time.
We are all grateful that we live within the city limits and we have the fire department that we do. Um, I just was recently able to get fire insurance again on my property for eighty-two hundred dollars a year. Part of the problem was the lack of ingress and aggression in the city block. I'm not very happy about that. Um, when you go to consider adding the CPI and keep in mind, it's no different thing. You're three percent taller. That you guys are looking at approving here at the front too. So think about that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I wanted to say, thank you for doing what you're doing for the fire department. Our fire department is amazing, amazing. We are so fortunate that, you know, you're fortunate to have Woodley as the head. And so I'm just asking you, please. Try to give the fire department what they need. You've got so many lives. We have people that don't keep their yards maintained. They've got a it's battle for them because people don't do what they're supposed to do in maintaining their properties. Is there any way there can be something that the council could come up with or a committee where there could be something um worked out to where. If somebody's not maintaining their their weeds or their yard, where there could be. Taxes or fees, fines, and that money generate to the fire department to help get more money. Or hire mud people to meeting for people that maybe can't afford it. Or whatever, but there's gotta be another way to help get some of these weeds down. And uh give our firefighters a fighting chance to begin. It's it's just really about people. So that's all I wanted to say is thank you. And please, think about that. They're they're great. We couldn't ask for another fire department.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Sluton.
Uh, I'm all in favor of having the CPI index on it. And and also, you know, who's gonna collect these fees? Is it, is the city's gonna do it or the fire department do? There was some conversation about it last time. Has that been determined?
No, has, I mean, the ordinance now says the city will collect them.
Okay, so we're keeping it this that way.
Well, I don't know. That's up to you, but.
I'd like the city to collect it.
Uh, Councilmember Perdok.
Well, I just want to thank everybody. Um, and. Also to say, I I don't know that there were too many that were um against the fire department receiving this unnecessary funding. Um, I know I wasn't. I also want to thank the fire department for the great work that they do, and I recognize that. Um, I was out the other night looking at the fire office in Joaquin. Uh, you guys did do a great job. Um, as you always do. Um, I'm also, as I just want to echo support uh that Councilmember Sluton gave. We need to have the CPI adjustment. So. Ms. Garcia won't have to come in and say, why are you doubling it or tripling it? Because it will go up automatically as it should. And that's my sentiment.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Well, I uh reiterate both of my council members' uh opinions. I think our fire department are always the the best. I think anywhere they go in California, they're always recognized as being one of the best fire departments that we have. Um. I I definitely believe that the city should definitely collect the money. I think that was an issue before that they were collecting. And that's, I think, why. A lot of this got missed is because there wasn't anybody really paying attention because it was here and here. Everybody kind of comes in after the fact and didn't know anything needed to be changed. So I I do believe that the city. So I, I do believe that the city, I am definitely for the city to be in the pass through, of course, of not keeping it, but it's going to pass through so we can keep track of it and, uh, not have to worry about this kind of things happening again. And, and, uh, you know, I'm for a, a steady, a steady increase and not a big whammy too. So, so thank you, Willie and your staff. They do a really great job for our community.
Council member product.
Yeah, I just forgot to add the, uh, I do think that we should collect it, whatever we can do to help facilitate the collection of those fees and then, um, route that to the fire department would be the best way to, way to go.
Councilmember Susan.
It would be also part of our yearly budget and fee, and fee resolutions anyway, so.
Councilmember Kramer.
I think you know Willie and the fire department, how I feel about the fire department.
I'm sorry, was that not on?
That's why I turned it on.
All right, that's, and I think you know how I feel about the department. I, I, I fully agree with my fellow council members about the job that you do about, um, the fact that when I need help, I know it's right down the street. You know, your last fee, this fee that we just were now increasing was, uh, actually not ever increased. It was eighty-five cents. We've gone ahead and we've gone with what your Nexus study says and I, I did my own little, uh, CPI, which is a lot simpler than the one you did and came up with virtually the same thing. So I, I fully support, and I told you that the other day, that amount. I'm not so much big as big on the CPI, to be very honest with you. It's been thirty-one years and we, now we're doubling the fees. Um, I, I, I'm not too sure I agree that it's kind of double in or increase by fifty percent even or twenty-five percent in the next three or four years. So my support for the CPI isn't as great. I will certainly go along with the rest of my council, fellow council members on whatever, uh, the majority decides. But that is my personal feeling and I felt like I've got to say that. And that's certainly no, nothing against, uh, the job that you do. You do a fantastic job. I know that and I'll defend that forever. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
Councilmember product.
I did have one more comment. Sorry that I have to do these do-overs, but I also would like to point out to the, to the community. We need to watch what's happening with other special districts and how their funding is acquired. By bringing this to us, um, and I think it's important for us to bring this out and discuss it. And so you guys all have an option and an opportunity to share your opinions with us. Um, I am a hundred percent in support of helping our school districts. We've got an increasing student population that needs to be met. Um, but one of the things I found out was the state implemented a significant increase, um, that we really didn't have any say over that. And I just want people to be aware of that. I mean, more than double what the fire departments ask and it just came in the middle of the night. And, um, so pay attention to that. See where those taxes are going and all those development fees, because as you heard from, uh, the TID presentation, um, we are trying to, to make a better place here in Clear Lake for us to live and for people to come and visit. But with more and more development fees and impact fees, um, that sometimes limits our growth and doesn't allow, um, developers to put in sidewalks and all the infrastructure, um, we would like them to.
Councilmember Kramer.
Yeah, uh, council member Perdok kind of reminded me of, that's exactly the point that I did not, not get, getting to make. And we're not, we on the council are looking at certainly fire fees, we're also looking at water. We're looking at silver, we're looking at a lot of things. And our, our focus is on bettering the city and in growing our economic base, uh, through development of, of, of businesses that will create jobs. Jobs that will allow our citizens to buy a better home or, or buy a home, period. So we're looking at, I mean, we're looking at all of these things. We're not just, oh, you're focusing on fire department, water, et cetera. Trying to focus, we're looking at the whole thing and trying to put it together, be able to move the city forward. And I, I hope you all realize that, that, that that we're looking at a lot more things and we make our decision and it may not sound fair to you or you individually or your cause individually, but trust me, we spend a lot of time agonizing over this. And we're friends and neighbors. That's the thing about this small city. I'm not, I'm not a cit, just a city councilman. I'm on, I'm pretty much, I know all of you. Uh, and I'm neighbors with most of you. Um, so I don't do anything, we don't do anything lightly here. Um, and that's, um, that's something that I think you, maybe sometimes you need to give a little more of the, a little more emphasis to, a little more thought to. Uh, we're not your, we're not your enemy. Pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Kramer. Um, you know, my position is I, I don't support the CPI. Uh, none of our city fees have a, a, a mandatory fee increase. We review them every year, just like we review COLA every year. Um, and I believe that's a model that works and we should continue with, but, um, if the majority feels differently, so be it. Um, meeting the, the, the benchmark that the fire district asks for through the, the Nexus report, I think, shows a, a strong support for our fire, fire department. Despite our, our, our other concerns, we really want you to thrive here in the city. So thank you. Um, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Oh, I moved to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. The resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake adopting fire mitigation fee, mitigation impact fee with the, with a CPI adjustment.
Second. I have a motion from council member Kramer, a second from council member Perdok. All those in favor?
No.
Pardon me. I'm so used to make you making motions. I have a motion from council member Sluton, a second from council member Perdok. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. City manager floor.
Okay, so, um, we need a little bit of additional traction on a couple of the things. So uh, a few of you mentioned about the city collecting the fees. I believe that was a majority. We're okay. Uh, okay. Um, the ordinance also requires that the fire districts submit an annual report to the city council. Um, you're wanting to keep that in there?
Yes.
Um, we addressed the CPI. Okay. One other issue, um, that currently isn't in the ordinance, but I think the council may want to have some consideration of is, so we have a fire district that's larger than the city. Um, the bulk of the planned development will incur within the city. Would you like the fees that are collected by development in the city to be spent for equipment and infrastructure for the fire department in the city?
I don't think we can separate it on equipment, but certainly we can on buildings. And we can't require that a, that an engine not go to lower lake or to mutual support in other parts.
Building public.
But the buildings, yes. No, I, I don't appear to do that before that.
So it seemed like, well, one word one, okay.
Okay, so, uh, we'll work that direction back into the ordinance, um, and bring it back to the council for consideration.
Chief.
Well, uh, in previous, I'm going to talk about the, the growth of the, like, fire district. And, and, and my vision is that six five covers all the way up to the city boundaries. That growth is in the areas of all of the airport. So station seventy-one.
Need to talk to the council chief.
That is, we look at our calling and, and the, the biggest thing is responsibility. So our major property, like, station seventy-one is certainly the area we'll cover all the way up to the point. Seventy-one is a critical part of the next eighteen. All that development. It's like that.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
No question about that.
Problem.
I bring back to council, any other direction that you need, city manager?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you all. All right, we're moving on to item thirteen, consideration of memorandum of understanding with the Conacta Unified School District for a school resource officer chief.
Evening mayor, members of the council. Uh, tonight I want to briefly go over, just go over the staff report on the, uh, updated MOU with the Conacta Unified School District. Um, so we've been, um, operating with the school resource officer in the school district, uh, since the start of the twenty twenty-three school year. Um, prior to that, we had a lapse. We had a SRO that, uh, had been in the schools for quite a while and left in October of twenty twenty. And then from October twenty twenty to the start of last year, we didn't have anybody. Um, so, uh, last year we had someone in the schools full-time, uh, we want to extend that, uh, contract for another year. Um, basically that person, nothing in the, in the MOU would change other than, uh, some price increases built at the school district. Um, so a little background, the school district has nine schools in Clear Lake, Clear Lake Oaks and Lower Lake. Um, having an officer assigned full-time to the district provides many benefits to the district, um, as well as the community. Um, the current, current staffing in the police department allow us to provide one full-time SRO. Um, there's provisions in there to add additional officers for special events, specific things, um, that will be, get, uh, funded at the full rate. Um, under the, uh, proposed MOU, uh, Conacta Unified School District will pay hundred sixty thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars to fund the cost of full-time position. Includes salary benefits, overtime, training, vehicle leases costs. Um, the, this contract went up roughly about fourteen thousand three hundred from the price of last year. I was due to, uh, a COLA increase in, uh, MOU of the PWA bargaining unit, a step increase for the officer assigned to the school district. And then a increase in the vehicle lease, um, cost and then additional fuel costs that are actually what the SRO spends. So with that, if there's, uh, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Sluton.
With, uh, Conacta, um, renting lots of space at the college and that the college was also dealing with some uh, security things. Has there been communication with the college to, to take care of that too, or? Or are you gonna, what's, what's?
This specific person would only deal with stuff that happens on space that's being used by the school district or their schools. If the school district is leasing space at the college, things that happen at the space they are leasing, this SRO would provide services for those. Um, but this person would not provide service to other locations. Other locations in the campus, the police department, we would respond and deal with those things. Uh, we have an agreement with the college, um, to handle, um, certain things. They handle certain things. Um, but if it was out of the area, the school district, um, is leasing, um, it would not be as specific as R O handles it. Obviously, if they're there and something happens, you know, needs to be addressed right away, they would, but, um, other than that.
Just one thing, maybe when I reach out to, to the people over there, the president of Woodland and see what can, because I think they were in the process of, uh, dealing with their security overall.
Yeah, no, we can definitely do that.
I have one question, Chief. Um, how much time does this SRO spend at the high school versus, uh, elementary, middle school?
I don't have the exact breakdown. Prior to last year, majority of their time was spent at high school and Lower Lake Elementary School. A, a good majority of it, and the rest was spent amongst the other seven schools. Last year was the city in, uh, middle schools first year being open as a middle school. Um, and I would say the majority of the time was spent at that location, then after that would have been Lower Lake High School and Lower Lake Elementary School.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll open up to public comment. Does anyone here in the chamber have, uh, a comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to answer more questions. I'm about to make a motion.
Please do.
To approve the memorandum of understanding for school resource officer program between the city of Clear Lake and the Conacta Unified School District.
I have a motion from council member Kramer, a second from vice mayor Overton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is unanimous. Moving on to item fourteen, consideration of updates to management classification and benefits plan and city salary schedule. Um, city manager floor.
Uh, yeah, um, Mayor Claffey, council member, so uh, this is, uh, we're used to this coming forward. We, um, the, the management agreement for management employees that are unrepresented, uh, the agreement the council has with them is to consider a, um, cost of living adjustment based on, um, the CPI equity adjustments in the labor market and the financial condition of the city. So it is not automatic. Um, and so each year, we come to the council and see if you would like to, um, offer that to management employees. So there's a little bit of history in here. I don't know that I need to go into it. Um, the last few years, as you know, um, CPI has been quite high. And, um, this past year, March to March, as well as selected for whatever reason, when the, the, uh, management agreement was put together, uh, was three and a half percent. Um, it's a little less than last year was five percent, but, um, as we recommended last year, I don't think that, um, you know, management should have a higher increase than, um, what's worked into the other agreements. And that's been three percent this year is what was agreed to. And so, uh, we're recommending in spite of, um, the three and a half percent CPI that, uh, council consider a three percent cost of living adjustment based on CPI for management employees.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions from council? Seeing none, open up to a public comment. Does anyone here in the chamber have a comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will bring it back to council.
Consensus we're looking for. What consensus?
You need to take, you need to make a motion.
I have second.
Make a motion to approve the three percent COLA for the employees impacted by the management benefits plan.
Second, that, thank you both. I have a motion by council member Perdok, a second from council member Kramer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? About unions. All right, moving to item fifteen, consideration of holding the first reading of ordinance number two seven zero dash two zero two zero two four in the ordinance of the city council of the city of Clear Lake, amending section two dash three point seven of the Clear Lake Municipal Code authorizing the city manager to sign documents as specified in government section four zero six zero two. City manager.
I'm actually going to have, uh, administrative services director Swanson give us that.
Honorable mayor and council members, a recent update to the government code sections four zero six zero one and four zero six zero two has prompted, uh, HCD to request the city to make an amendment to the municipal code that would allow the city manager, in addition to the mayor and vice mayor, to sign the documents approved by the city council, such as warrants, contracts, conveyances, resolutions, ordinances, any documents requiring the city seal. Previously, the city manager was authorized by a council resolution to sign CDBG documents for HCD, um, including applications and contracts. However, that government code update specifies that only the mayor and vice mayor have the authority to sign those documents approved by the council unless specifically authorized in an ordinance. And, um, basically HCD is asking that we, um, adopt this ordinance or they won't release any more funding to us. So, uh, we recommend adoption of this ordinance, uh, holding the first reading tonight and scheduling the second reading adoption for the next council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any questions from the council?
I would just add that, I mean, we think our, we sent the army municipal code, we think under powers and duties of the city managers already covered, but they want this code code section specifically referenced.
Or why they will withhold money?
Yeah, well, I mean, we can, we can have the mayor come and sign all the documents, so we can do that.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open up to the public, any comments? Yes, please come forward.
Speak into the microphone.
City Manager, HPC.
HCD is California Department of Housing and Community Development.
CDBG. Community Development Block Grant, that's a grant through HCD.
Thank you. It's one of the few things I don't have to read out in full, so I like the abbreviation. Any other comments here in the chamber? Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Well, to for the consideration of holding the first reading of ordinance number two seven zero dash two oh two four and ordinance of the city council and the city of Clear Lake, of the city of Clear Lake amending section two dash three point seven of the Clear Lake Municipal Code authorizing the city manager to sign documents as specified in government code section four zero six zero two. I'll say that.
A motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Suton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? As is unanimously. Right, super business item, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, several few few items, so. See council candidates, the period for pulling papers is open this week through five PM on August ninth. So if anyone's interested in that, they need to see City Clerk. She's already had a handful of folks who have made appointments with her. I wanted to give a little bit of an update to the council on our Austin Beach and the bubble curtain situation, you may have noticed is not looked like it's supposed to. So we've had a lot of issues with the anchoring system on the sort of the yellow thing that you see out there is actually, it extends all the way down to the bottom of the lake. And that was installed as a way, as you know, the wind currents push algae mats over here, hit our shore, that's why Austin Park and Red Bud Park only get trapped, and so the idea is we'll keep that from pushing into the beach area. And last year, it worked, you know, much better than it has the last couple of weeks, but the the anchoring system has had came loose and the curtain was not up against the lake shore the way it was supposed to have been. And actually have some video as the wind was pushing algae mats into the lake shore, it was hitting the southern border of that curtain wrapping around the beach and it just sucked and filled that whole thing up. And then, of course, you know, it looked like that outside for quite a period of time when it was really hot, and then the wind action broke up the algae outside the curtain and everything that was trapped in was was still there, very unhealthy. So our crews have done a number of things this week to break that up with the water truck, and there has been some significant progress. They were out there, the boat readjusting and reanchoring the curtain. So it's in a lot better shape now, there's still some issues, some of the tubing has got wrapped up in the anchors and whatnot, but I just wanted you to know that I know it's it's a little embarrassing to see that, that certainly is the way the system is intended to work, but we are trying our best to get it back on track. There's going to be a scoping meeting for the airport redevelopment environmental impact report at the planning commission next week. So this is, we released the notice of preparation, I think I mentioned at the last council meeting. This is just an opportunity for agencies and the public to hear kind of a high level overview of the project and provide their comments on what they think about the project or potential environmental impacts will be. And then, once we receive that comment, we will begin preparation of the draft environmental impact report, then of course, there'll be another public hearing associated with that. This isn't really required to be in front of the planning commission or even to be a public hearing, but you know, we know it's an important project and you know, the more we get the word out and the public and the community have the opportunity to learn and provide comment on it, we thought would be helpful, so. Well, I'll leave this morning's meeting to Mayor Claffey to share, I guess the only other thing that I had on my list is there's a number of mailers that went out this week from Highlands Water Company, some of you may have received them. The the city received quite a number of them, so it looks like it was focused on property owners within Highlands's boundary that do not have water connections. The call to action was to contact me and tell me to withdraw the lawsuit against Highlands Water, but unfortunately, there's wildly misleading inaccurate information that was the basis for the letter. Fortunately, the the folks that have reached out to me have responded to and shared some other information and some of them actually withdrew on their request for us to withdraw and said, okay, I think you guys need to follow this through. But you know, just the point here is that there's still a lot of misinformation being circulated in the community and we need to continue to do a better job of getting information out and the facts out because it's confusing the share of words of Highlands Water.
So you're authorized to withdraw the lawsuit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's okay, anyway, that's my report.
Thank you, City Manager. The airport meeting?
Tuesday.
Tuesday evening, six PM, you can find the agenda staff report on the city website.
That's right. All right, thank you, Councilmember Suton, your report.
I guess I intended the laugh competing yesterday. We started on changing new chair and Stacy Martinez the chair and I was voted in as the vice chair. We started on the fire protection of the county MSR, which includes our fire. A lot of information to go through. A lot of information to review and look through and make a determination on the MSR on our next meeting, which is in September, September eighteenth or something like that. So more to come on that. Also, we were requested to, we could add some more work for our new executive director of AFCO, like pilot, and one of the things that I suggested that they in update they their MSR is the sort of we've had over the last year or so, some spills, some smell issues and lack of power to several of the pump stations that some some houses that were a little bit lower in their thing have had sewage spills put in their garage, so. Need to have a look at that, see. That's it.
Councilmember Perdak.
I didn't know what's an MSR.
Fiscal service review.
I knew you were gonna ask. So I sat in and listened as the alternate at the laugh competing, it was riveting. But that's the only meeting I attended. Chief, I apologize for having to miss the Ava meeting, but I had a meeting that pays me money, so I had to take that one. I don't know if you wanted to share what happened with Ava, you're welcome to, I think that's important.
I can't share much, I was not at the meeting, Lieutenant.
There you go.
President Lambert, we're there. I know we gave our normal statistics, quarterly statistics on the toes and abatements and things we did during the last quarter and also for the fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four, presentation was made on that.
Thank you, though, Chief.
Councilmember Kramer.
Not too much to report either. I did attend a RRA meeting on Monday, we talked about some grant money that you received and go to or to developing Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, Margaret. Anyhow, we, it's a we talked about monies that were will be starting and trying to biomass projects started to take care of a lot of the dead and dying trees, either were fire killed or killed by fine needles in pine or oak burs in oak trees. And that that project's gaining some momentum, I hope it will be better, but also talked about and actually Chief Chase Sepeta was at the meetings, he talked about their work, Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, Margaret. That deals with, was it was formed to deal with water issues on the lake quality, et cetera, but because of all the part fires that we've had in the last six, eight years. The focus has really shifted to fire resiliency. Increasing your, well, reducing the fire hazards, some other things we even talked about. Trying to, you know, reduce the vegetation to make it safer. At any rate, we've got a project here in the Clear Lake area specifically, about two hundred and twenty-three acres, I believe, rails throughout the city that that clerk will be doing different things over the next few years. Chipping operations, maybe burning operations, refusable, et cetera. So that was that meeting, and I'm also on the board or I'm on the committee for the Shakespeare at the lake, which will be here on August second and third out here in the park and on the stage. Tempest, the punk edition, I think it is, so it's a modern version of the Shakespearean play Tempest. And that's pretty much what I have.
And again, wow, what character are you playing?
The Tempest. I'm the Grinch.
Vice Vice Mayor Overton.
Yes, well, we had our folks that would still be here because I'd like to talk to him about, because we did have our clean water meeting and we are doing some things to start trying to see in some of the areas of where we could capture and see what's in our water, like what's actually coming into our lake, so we're working on that, we're gonna do some little test things out there on some different, to see if they're gonna work to tell us what's going into our environment here. So I will contact him later to find out exactly where his his problems are. But I'm kind of excited to see how this process is gonna gonna work. My my concerns was over by Abrams and and volcanic stuff that comes through our our waters down here. But they're they're gonna try some different places around the lake. Unfortunately, Clear Lake wasn't gonna be the big area because there's others, they're trying in some smaller streams so that we can see what's coming in. If we can figure out if this works, then we might go bigger, but I'm kind of anxious to see how all that will work. And maybe we can find out actually what's coming into our lake, because that's been the hardest part to really capture where it's coming from. And you know, and so these little streams that come in is we're gonna try to see if we could figure out what's actually coming through each one of those streams, so I'm kind of excited to finding, start moving on some of that to try to get us here. I wanted to make the comments since you're here, on the curb gutters and sidewalks, you know, you move to the country. You move to the country, you don't have curb gutters and sidewalks, you know. And when develop, and when developments and when developers come in and they do things like the apartment complex over there, they're putting in curb gutters and sidewalks, so it is required. If they build a house, it's required, but you know, when they're older places, it's not required, of course, you know. That's that's just, but when you move to the country, you're gonna have potholes, you're gonna have these things, and the city I know people think we're, oh no, but we're a very young city, and we took on roads that were totally already falling apart, and I mean, I feel like we've done more roads than any city that I know of in the state of California in in since, what, two thousand and seventeen? I don't think any city, big or small, has done as many roads as what we have. I think we're really trying hard, but when people say my road, my road, well, everybody's road was, everybody wants their road done, I, we understand that, but yeah, but but we can only, we can only do so many roads at a time, and so we do have, is that online where they can look at the the chart that we had showed a couple of meetings ago?
I can't say for sure, we have some, yeah, we need to, I'll I'll double check and get.
I think that probably needs to be on because this is seems to be coming back, and I think it's fortunately, gonna be a lot of a big issue here that we need to just have posted.
We actually, we we have some nice news signs for the lobby and stuff to have the map and stuff on it. We just, they came in today, we didn't have a chance to get them up, but they'll be up.
I I think we need something online too, because not everybody's gonna come to the city hall, they're just not going to, so. So anyway, so that's, I believe that's all I have to say, I just yeah, that's all I report.
Mayor, can I just follow up to one of the comments, Vice? Mayor brought up and related to the comment earlier, so again, you know, as we know, basically, nothing was done right in the city the first time, that's why we're trying to do it right now, but we did get funding and are in the process of doing a citywide storm drain analysis and master plan, so that has been underway, which would be mapping all the stuff and all that, so it's really important, big undertaking for us to get done, but that allows to better plan for what we need to do.
Great, thank you. For my report today, this morning, City Manager Florin, I went to a meeting around Lake Pillsbury. The situation remains pretty dire. Congressman Thompson was there. The mayor from Lakeport was there, county staff, some tribes were there as well, all of us in support of keeping the dam. Unfortunately, again, things aren't looking great. I just wanted to give a shout out to the work that the county is doing. Supervisor Crandall has been front and center, talking with folks, trying to to do whatever he can, and I don't think folks know how hard he is working, Supervisor Sabatia and Treasurer and Tax Collector Patrick Sullivan. They're on the front lines of this, and you know, we're going up in Sonoma, Mendocino, Humboldt. And they're doing all they can. Congressman Thompson has been very supportive. We just have limited options right now, so we didn't come away from that meeting with any action items for the city, and I know Lake Pillsbury doesn't really impact us, but we have a community in Lake County that needs support, and I would like for us to to support them however we can. Future agenda items, Vice Mayor Overton.
About, I'd like to put on to the future agenda to talk about the sales tax, we have this eight point seven five. So we have this money that's kind of like not really being used that I really feel needs to come to the community, so I'd like to kind of break it back and talk about putting maybe you know, doing a survey and stuff and putting a sales tax on for like recreation, park and recreation, maybe a swimming pool, you know, just, but I just want to put it on the agenda to kind of talk about and see what we can do to move forward on, maybe getting something like that.
I would be in support of that, I mean. All right, we have direction to have that in the next agenda.
What would it be one that we have two thirds?
Well, that would be what we'd have to discuss, that's what I just wanted on that.
I have a future agenda item as well, recently, there has been some turmoil with the Clear Lake Farmers Market. I want to have a discussion about our fees for events and markets and festivals shifting from a fee based model to a deposit based model. It's something that the city of San Francisco did recently, not the deposit piece, but they've they've slashed all fees for markets and and festivals like that, I don't think that's appropriate for us, but shifting the burden would be something I'd like to discuss. All right, I only here two. So we'll keep that off. All right, moving on to nothing else, except thank you all for joining us today, we're gonna move to close session.